Okay, it's 6 o'clock. If you'll all join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic
which stands one nation, under God,
indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Chris, we just had a couple others join. If we could find out who they are. Who's on the line with telephone number ending in 35?
This is Dale Alderman.
Hi.
Hello.
And how about phone number ending in 80?
Sarah Sadowski.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Suzanne Sadowski.
Oh, hi, Sue. And how about phone number ending in 16?
Back to you Lynette, Russ.
Oh, hi, Russ. Awesome. Okay, we'll just get them, Chris, as say if anyone else comes on so I know who we have on the board.
Yes, that sounds good.
Okay. We opened the meeting. I need to ask for approval of the agenda, additions, deletions, changes, if there are any. And hearing none, if I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you.
I had a question. I thought that there were some resignations that weren't on the personnel.
I'm not sure, but that we would, we'll bring that up under vacancies if there is any. I don't think there were, but we can talk about it at that point.
They were old, but we never got to them, I guess. They were in the packet.
Yes, there's some in this packet.
Okay, we'll get to them when we get down to that area. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Teacher, staff, community questions. Hi, Marcia.
Of course, it's me. So, I have two questions. One, I was curious to know, speaking as a community member, I'm curious to know about COVID money and how that was spent at the end of the year. Last year, we had COVID money, like I believe that every district got, and I was curious to know how that was spent. And then the other question I had was in regards to the second floor of the school hall that's sitting vacant still. And I was wondering if there's plans to keep all going because it's, it's sitting there not being used and space is a precious commodity in our school. So, those are my two questions.
Okay. On the first, we can generally give you an idea, but Louis is not going to be with us tonight. And I can get back to you at the next meeting. We're going to outline on that. And on the upper floor, we have started a small discussion on that. And that's more financially, where the money's going to come from. I know last time when we discussed it, it was, I think, $800,000 to do that. So, we'd have to go out for the community. We have not gotten into that further at this time. But that is on our agenda for things to discuss and perhaps do something with. Billy? Anything you want to say?
I'm all for discussion, Lynette.
Okay. Okay, does that kind of answer your questions?
That's perfect, Lynn. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Tina?
Just in response to you, Marcia, I think one of the hiccups that we have is knowing, do we actually need the space or not? So, if that, if, I don't know, if you could elaborate on that or maybe get back to us at the next meeting with some information as to, you know, how, why it's needed and how you think it could be used, just as some ideas. I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, I would defer to the administration, but I mean, I think we had a waiting list for pre-K this year. I mean, we probably could have had another pre-K class, but there's no space. I mean, teachers are sharing rooms. You know, I think it's ideal, to be honest, I think it would be ideal to move seventh and eighth grade up there and turn my wing that I'm in into like a, you know, three, four, five, six, or something like that and kind of give pre-K kids their own kind of one and their own wing. So, I just think space is a precious commodity. I mean, meetings, I'm thinking of IEP meetings, like, you know, that's trying to make sure we have that. And especially with this COVID and rooms, making sure that the space is there for classes to happen and things of that nature. I just think it's really sad that our school has, you know, built a beautiful wing years ago and unfortunately, that space has been sitting there vacant of people use. I know that there is some third term things that are up there, but I just think that's sad to, that we built that beautiful area and it's just not being utilized to the best of our ability. But I would defer to the administration, building administration, to be more specific about how that would be used, but thank you.
And we will get into that. I know that Sarah has mentioned it a couple times. I know things are tight. Originally, just to let you know, because I hadn't been on the board at the time, that space was put up there because it was really, when we put on that addition, it really wasn't much, I think maybe 10,000, 20,000 to put that space up there. But also, I'll say at that time, our enrollment was increasing by over 100 pupils every year. And then we went down and we've been stable about the same for the last 10 years. So, while yes, it's there, the intention was to use it because we had a slew of students coming in. That's not to say anything about we need to look at it and discuss it. I'm still, like I said, a little leery on the budget because all of this COVID money and everything else has got to be repaid. So, I'm a little leery on what the state is going to do to recoup their money. So, but that will come up probably closer to budget time. We've got a pretty good, we've got two, I think, proposals out there on what it was at that time. And you can pretty much take those and increase them by a certain percentage. Yeah, but yeah, definitely on the board. Now, we have got a new procedure starting tonight. The board chairs superintendent met and some of our schools, well, at certain times, all of our schools have had a little bit of difficulty running a meeting when we have a lot of people coming in that have a question on one item. I'm sure most of you have seen our board meetings when we have 20, 30 parents coming, coming in on a different issue. With COVID, with everything going on right now, some of the boards have been having problems with the community members. And as you know, COVID in house schools are reacting to it this year as pretty much polarized communities. Either half and half, do we wear masks, do we not, do we let parents do it, do we go with the CDC recommendations? And of course, the Greater Wellton County Supervisory Union has put Chris in charge of making decisions for the entire supervisory union. So, saying that, at the beginning of our meetings, we will be reading the GURKSU policy. It's number C2 that talks about public participation of board meetings. Saying that, let me read it. Hang on, for some reason, my sports thing keeps coming up.
Lynette?
As per, pardon?
Just to clarify, this is not a policy, this is more just a procedural aspect of our policy.
Right, I'm sorry. I misspoke. So, as per the GURKSU policy, C2, public participation of board meetings, this board values the public participation and recognizes the importance of public input on issues affecting the community, Wellton Town School Board and our communities. As we begin this meeting, it is important for us to find a balance among public participation with other important objectives, including but not limited to, ensuring all community members have a reasonable opportunity to express their views to the board, completing board business effectively, efficiently, and in an orderly manner, and respecting the rights of board members, staff members, students, and audience members. As a result, we ask that if you would like to speak this evening or at any of our meetings, to, if you are in person, please sign the speaker sheet, which is at the conference room. Or if you are attending online, please indicate in the chat your name and that you would like to speak. All speakers will be given a maximum of three minutes to address the board. You will be allowed to only speak once at this meeting. All questions will be taken into advisement and will be addressed within, within reason and within 72 hours either via email or at the next board meeting. Proper decorum and etiquette are expected to be followed at all public meetings of the Board of Education. Recognize speakers that will not transfer or delegate their time to others. If a speaker is no longer present at the meeting room at the time he or she's time is allotted, the speaker will forfeit his or her opportunity to speak and shall be prohibited from transferring time to different individuals. Groups that wish to express their views shall select one speaker to represent the group's views to the board. When in judgment, the chair, board chair, or presiding officer, it appears if several audience members wish to express the same or similar views, the board chair or presiding officer may recognize one of them to address the board on behalf of the group. Or if a speaker is repeating views that he or she or another speaker, all many has presented, the board president, the board chair I should say, or presiding officer may recognize the next speaker before the current speaker's time has elapsed. Most of our, as you're aware, most of our meetings are as they are tonight, mostly board members, teachers, and administrators. We don't really have, and in the past, I've probably been the most lax of all the boards on allowing people to speak. But like I said, some of our boards have had trouble, whether it be COVID and questioning that we had to cut things short. There were a few years of it, and I don't know if you remember, we had like 35 public, people from the public at our meeting. And everyone wanted to have their say. Out of 35, probably a good 30 of them were repeating what everybody else said. And while we value that, we just, in order to accommodate everybody, we would run so late into the evening, we wouldn't get our board duties completed. So, it's not that we're trying to silence anybody. And most certainly, if people out in the public have an item they wish to discuss or wish to discuss with the board, they can call Chris or myself and you can get placed on the agenda. But we really do need to know what you're speaking about. If you bring up a subject that is not on the agenda, board members will not be responding because we need time to think about it, see what our deals, look at policies, procedures, et cetera. So, that's why you've got the 72-hour or next board meeting, depending on the topic. Are there any questions on that? Okay, not seeing any, anything. I will be sure that this is read at every meeting. But like I said, we, and you know, we usually allow you all to talk whenever you want to or when, you know, within reason. Some of the boards have decided to put public comments on two or three different places in the agenda because right now, of course, we just started the meeting and haven't spoken on anything. So, questions may not arise until after we speak on topics. The board itself, my board members were not, I think, aware of this, but we will discuss that and change the agenda according to their wishes. Okay? And just the biggest thing to me is to remind any members of the public or who want to speak, names, student names, any names whatsoever shall not be spoken of. A parent coming on saying, well, little Johnny, you are, you're kind of putting a bullet on target on that child's head. We don't want any of that. It should be all, the procedure that you want to talk about should be held for all students. We're here for all the students, not just one or two. So, we just don't want anybody pulled out. A lot of times, I don't think intentionally, but staff members will be called out on an issue and that's not appropriate at all. Board, are you all set with that?
Yeah. Yep.
I agree that it would be nice to have some extra spaces for the public to weigh in or ask questions on the agenda. I wasn't aware that we were discussing this tonight or starting that.
Right, that was something that the executive committee decided. The executive committee is the three chairs of the different divisions of our supervisory union. And when we discussed it, like I said, one of the chairmen were having extreme difficulties and has never been in that position before. So, that's when we decided that, you know, most of us just kind of wing it, that we should have and just state what the procedure is so the public would know. It's very seldom that we, you know, really have that situation, but that's where it came from, Tina. Okay, hearing nothing else, we're going to continue on. Anyone have any other business to bring before the board? Just to recognize, Emily Quigley just joined the meeting. 96, someone with the cell phone or phone that ends in 98, could you identify yourself? And you are muted if you're trying to tell us your name. Hi.
Hi, it's Tim Hammond here. How are you?
Good, how are you, Tim?
I'm good.
Good. Okay, so we'll continue on. Any new business to be brought before the board? Okay, seeing no waves or hands up. Finance, you have your September financial reports. Louis is not on tonight. So, they were pretty cut and dry and it's early in the season, so we don't have, early in the year, so we don't have a lot to talk about. If anybody has any questions on the finances, you're more than welcome to contact Louis and he can address them or call me and I'll find out the answers for you. Continuing on to the Cassette agenda. Director's orders, you had, I think there were three warrants that went out since the last meeting. I did approve all of them. I did have a board member have a question on one. I did get the answers for them. Are there any questions on the warrants? Do I have a motion to accept them? I need a motion to accept them. Thank you, Tina. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on, we have two sets high, two sets of unofficial minutes tonight. The first one being from August 9th. Are there any additions, deletions, changes? We'll start with the August 9th. Seeing and hearing none, can I have a motion to accept those?
Motion to accept the minutes from August 9th? Thank you, Tina.
Again, any? Anyone have anything on the minutes from August 9th? Hearing nothing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll move on to approve the August 26th minutes. Are there any additions, deletions, changes? Seeing none, may I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the August 26th minutes.
Thank you, Bill. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chris, superintendent's report.
Thanks, Lynette. I have a few items to discuss. Some of the items in the, my report are more for information purposes for the board. But the start of the school year, I just want to, had an opportunity to get out to Rutland Town on the first day of school. I just want to commend Sarah, Eric, and all the teachers. It's a great first day. I think it was, I was happy to see all the staff and the students back in the building. It was a really good vibe. I think, you know, obviously, we're still dealing with COVID, particularly Rutland Town School. But I know that as we move throughout the school year, that with the staff and the community and Eric and Sarah, we'll get through this and we'll have a great year. Along that same line, well, let me pause for a second. Match testing, Sarah and Eric will probably talk a little bit about this in their principal report, but JRCSU, all schools will be conducting the fall-based assessments. And this provides some baseline data in terms of regards to math and reading. Allows the teachers, the administrators, as well as the, from an SU level, Rutland Town level, to kind of take a look at, see where, you know, identify areas of strengths and areas of needs regarding our students, regarding our schools, and how best to apply supports or resources to meet those needs. You know, as I said, it's something which we'll be doing, we'll be doing this in the next couple weeks. We will have a winter and a spring and will allow us to kind of measure growth over the course of the year. We will have, at the end of the year, particularly for the board, just a bit of a report, just kind of give a review in terms of the growth that we saw this year. It just comes, you know, some debrief and some final thoughts with regards to that. I alluded to the COVID, as all of us are aware, that we've had five individuals within our school community who have tested positive. These are unrelated cases. These are community transmission, not school-based transmissions. We are aware in terms of the unique situations around each one of these cases where, obviously, we cannot divulge that privacy. But it is something which, you know, Eric, Sarah, myself, and, you know, our council communication as well as Lisa Lounis, the school nurse, you know, make these daily decisions in terms of what adjustments need to be made to the plan. Our plan, as we said, as we said before, is to follow the AOE Department of Health recommendation around masks. Last week, Secretary French adjusted that to push it back to October 4th. I know that there have been some questions about the CDC. And if you look at the CDC guidance, we are closely following the CDC guidance as well. Even though we are following the Department of Health masking recommendation currently, we are, look at here as we look at, you know, vaccination, you know, we have been, I would say promoting it, but we provide opportunities and information to all interested families who are looking for a place to be vaccinated, obviously with Rutland Town. With the majority of our students who are below the age of 12 do not yet have access to the vaccine. It's, you know, really not relevant, but for family members as well as for some of our junior high students, 70th grade, we have provided that information. We are, obviously, you know, we're looking at the consistent and effective mask use in our buildings. We are looking at physical distancing when appropriate. As we looked at the recommendations, there is that recommendation for three feet when we can. But as we looked at our classrooms, we are doing the best we can. I know Sarah, Eric could talk a little more about this with regard to the cafeteria, the adjustment that I made to meet those needs. We are also looking at universal screening or the surveillance testing. Lisa Lounis, myself, Jackie Becker, who is the nurse at Middletown and Wells Village School, we are looking at bringing that into our school. It is a logistical nightmare, just to be honest, in terms of the state has kind of thrust us upon schools and said, well, let's try to figure this out. It is a drain on resources and time. And so, we're looking at how to effectively do this within our school without being too disruptive. It is something that we feel is necessary to bring into our schools. So, we're trying to find a way to make it work. Our goal is to have surveillance testing in our schools on a voluntary basis by the end of this month. So, more information on that will be forthcoming once we work through that. But that will be something, like I said, working with Eric and Sarah and Lisa Lounis on this as well. Obviously, you look at some of the other things, our ventilation, hand washing, you know, sanitizing. These are all things which we've been addressing, you know, it's last year. These things still continue in our classrooms and our schools to this day. I think, you know, teachers are doing a great job. I think our maintenance staff, you know, Eric and Sarah, making sure that we're constantly, you know, washing hands, you know, the hand sanitizer, doing things along those lines. So, we do have these mitigation strategies in place. We are encouraging all staff and students to stay home when sick or when you have some symptoms. I understand the need for childcare, I understand the need that people need to get to work. But, you know, this fall, particularly, you know, early winter, as we are waiting on vaccines to be available for our kids, we're, please, if you have an opportunity, please make sure if your child is, has any of the symptoms, please keep him home. We've, you know, had some situations, I've heard a situation at our school where people have sent a child to school sick where they didn't think it was that bad and it's since caused a quarantine issue. We just want to make sure that moving forward, that we are doing what's best. And if there are hardships, I understand, but we just have to make sure that if you are, you know, sick or have symptoms, please make sure you keep your kid home or the staff member to stay home as well. Contact tracing, a little bit different than this year. I know that you may have heard about this, you'll probably read about this in the Herald in the next couple of days. Things are a little bit different this year than they were last year. Department of Health, last year, we would, if we had a case, we'd contact them within an hour or two. We have a meeting set up via Zoom. We go through our line list, all the steps, and we kind of walk through and they would confirm that we are doing everything we need to be done. This year, it's a little bit different in terms of responsiveness where there is a bit of a delay, four or five days is sometimes the best. One of the things I do appreciate is affected, you know, Sarah, Eric is, knew this at least from Rutland Town perspective. Lisa, our school nurses, Lisa Madison, are all well-versed in this. I know that when we had reached out to Department of Health to confirm our process, that they were, you know, we are all doing the right thing. So, we are going through contact tracing. If there are questions, obviously, please reach out to Sarah, Eric, or the school nurse and, you know, answer any question they may have about that. But we, it is a bit of a headache, we understand that, that if a whole class will have to quarantine. But like I said, we're operating under the conditions guidelines which have been set forth. So, we do appreciate all the patience, understanding of our parents because as a parent myself, I know how disruptive that can be. But we want to thank each and everybody for that. Last thing really is just, I just want to talk, we're talking about the physical distancing because it does come up. We are, you know, obviously, we're going to do it on a daily basis, but there has been some question about recess or outside. The Department of Health, the CDC, and American Association of PRC really have nothing on outdoor masking. One of the things we are looking to do in all of our schools is just doing a better job of just making sure that during recess, that we don't really have too many crowds, that while kids are going to play together, that they're going to do the things they need to do during that time. But we just want to make sure that, you know, we are still keeping our kids in the best possible position to limit spread. And I do want to say this without jinxing us, but we have not, 18 months have had a spread in any of our schools because of these strategies that we've been closely adhering to and following by the Department of Health and CDC. So, we expect that to continue. Moving forward, like I said, the other items were reported more just for informative purposes. I just wanted you to be aware of just some of the key workshop and leadership opportunities that the administrative team will be taking place in. Sarah and Eric will be participating in some of these. But whatever they do not participate in, other administrators, we turn keen for them throughout the year as well as those that Sarah and Eric will be attending. They'll be doing the same for other administrators. But you can see that we have a, on top of everything else, we have a very busy year this year. Just trying to make sure that, you know, we provide the best education possible for your, for your child. Any questions? Go ahead, Tina.
Two things. One, I was trying to follow you when you were talking about the masks testing. Did you mention S-Back?
So S-Back is in the spring, so map testing is a, it's, okay, go ahead, Tina.
Oh, I know, I think I know the difference, but I know at one of our previous meetings that we were told that the S-Back results were in and that they were going, they'd gone over, and then they would be shared. I was curious if those would be shared next meeting.
If we were waiting for those to be available for public consumption, they're still embargoed right now. So as those have been lifted, then we will provide that information to the board.
And then the second thing is, on your calendar of events?
Yep.
It not mentioned the September 28th Board Retreat. Is that still going on?
That is still going on, that was oversight, I apologize. So that should be all.
I'm going to try to make sure, thanks.
Yes, thank you.
Any more questions for the superintendent?
And just to clarify, the September 20th is a board workshop. Public are invited to view and attend, but like I said, it's just a workshop around board member rules, responsibilities, as well as just effective school boards.
Thank you, Chris. Principals Report.
All right, good evening, everyone. So to kind of dovetail off of what Chris said about our COVID cases, it's been a rough start for everybody. I greatly appreciate teachers, staff, front office custodians, everybody. Our team has just been amazing, parents have been wonderful. I want to explain a few things that we're doing that at Rutland Town, although not required, are just smart decisions. So with our, of course, everybody is in masks except one outside. The cafeteria only has two grades in it at a time. So kindergarten and preschool eat in our classrooms, and then, I think I talked about this at the last board meeting, but I think it's important to highlight, grades one and two, three, four, five, six, and seven and eight are in the cafeteria. So we ask that they sit with their classmates. So let's say, for example, if Mrs. Atori's students, they sit together, but they don't join Mrs. Alderman's or Mrs. Norton's classroom, as an example. So we do have assigned seating in the cafeteria. We do have assigned seating on the bus. So again, thank you to all of the families that have been understanding as we navigate this difficult time. We want to, on a positive note, congratulate Linda Mullin. She was nominated for UVM Outstanding Teacher of the Year. Chris Sell and Lisa Madison announced that, along with Brian Adet, who is recognized as UVM Teacher of the Year from West Rutland. Their nominations will go further to be recognized at a larger event, more than likely remotely later this year. Linda is an amazing teacher, she's taught a variety of grade levels. She is well-versed in personalized learning plans. She's taught kindergarten, reading, fourth grade, first grade, I'm sure I'm missing some in there. And this year, she's not going to add to the park as a middle school math interventionist, so a huge congratulations to Linda Mullin. I also wanted to include in my report our enrollment. Our enrollment numbers have stayed strong. We have kindergarten, we have 35 students, we expect 36. We have two large kindergarten classrooms right now with one teacher, and we've realized in both of these classrooms that a lot of these children have never been in school. So they're missing a lot of those life skill needs, you know, buttoning pants, tying shoes, blowing noses. So our, everybody is working extremely hard, and these kindergarten teachers are especially. There's a lot of needs in these classrooms. We love enrollment numbers going up, but I always say, no more kindergarten. They're full. So the numbers there are listed, and Marcia, you had mentioned, Billy did talk at the last meeting a little bit about the upstairs, and you are correct, we currently have 12 students in preschool that are on our waitlist. We have 13, actually, we have 13 students on our waitlist for pre-K. Some other things, we had great in-service, both for GRCSU and Rutland Town. Something new this year is elementary school teachers are getting trained in Jump Rope, the online grading platform. So there's a little bit more backend work to do, and there'll be another refresher training with one of our instructional coaches later this month. Map testing, as Chris mentioned, started today. So we have a huge thanks to not only all of our teachers, but also our interventionists, they've been instrumental, as well as our guidance counselor in helping us with map testing. Food service, thank you, board members, for supporting this. And here I said, oh, I'll just cover the pay. I didn't realize this many kids would be getting a second meal. So you can see, over just the first few days of school, we have some really hungry kids. So right now, just to the September 7th, we have 57 total meals of kids getting seconds. I have made a point to, every day but today, I've been in the cafeteria, just checking things out, providing feedback, they've been very receptive. I have heard from kids, you know, some good comments to the kitchen staff the first couple of days that they've noticed a difference as well. So Eric and I will continue to update you on what those numbers look like. Athletics are in full swing, and just another plug, hiring update, we are still looking for a special education teacher, a building-based substitute, and we're still looking for after-school assistance for our tapestry program. We need at least two more people in tapestry to get that after-school program up and running. A few building matters here from Kelly Treya, new dishwasher, solar project is ongoing, stormwater is in process, basketball courts repaired, sealed, new lines, boiler cleaning inspection is scheduled, the water meter replacement is scheduled, and the small field got some repair with topsoil. This Friday, Eric has a bus evacuation scheduled, so I know some parents get concerned when they see buses outside a little bit early. It's just a routine bus evacuation we need to do every September and again in February. Seventh grade team building starts this Wednesday, eighth grade starts the following week. Thank you to middle school teachers for being flexible in those dates and rearranging as needed. And eighth grade DC virtual meeting with the families, we're hoping to have it September 30th at 7:00 remote. We found out, thank you, Tina, for letting us know that there's a Rutland High School meeting at 6:00 at the same time. So we're just waiting to hear if that works with the tour company. So Eric and I plan on meeting with students and parents to go over the itinerary. Kate Daly has offered to help with some fundraising for our eighth graders, and then we will explain to them in the meeting on the 30th that they would then need to come to the next school board meeting and ask permission to attend since it's an overnight trip. And finally, again, I just, you know, Eric and I want to thank everybody. It has been, you know, a little bit bumpy start of the year, but I think from a morale standpoint, we are all in this together, everybody's working really hard, everybody's pitching in where they can, and I'm just excited for a good year. So thank you all. I don't know if you want to add anything?
No, things are great. It's a, it was a bumpy road in the beginning, but things are really panning out. Everyone's stepping up, it's impressive, it really is impressive.
Nice. Tina, you've got her, your hand raised.
Thanks. I just wanted to clarify, what is the policy, and maybe Chris already spoke about it when he was talking about COVID policies, but for visitors in the building, are they allowed with masks, are they not allowed, are they allowed outside with masks or not masks? I'm just curious if we could clarify, I'm not sure.
So we're trying to obviously restrict visitors a little bit. Visitors come in the building for educational purposes or reasons, have to be masked. Just anybody who enters our Rutland Town School needs to wear a mask. If I walk in, I have to wear a mask, regardless of vaccination status, that is important. So outside, it depends on the event or the circumstance. So if someone's being used to, say, supervise a playground, then we would have to look at them, we'd be following just the AOE, CDC, where they would have to, you know, be on masks at that particular time. But anybody, anyone indoors has to wear a mask.
If I could, as far as people indoors, and yes, definitely that, wear masks. Last year, no one was allowed in unless they had a specific reason or meeting for a purpose. Because of the high rate of virus going around, can you tell me, are they just allowed to visit, or are they coming here, parents, et cetera, for a specific reason?
We haven't had many parent visitors, basically a few dropping some things off for kids or bringing them to the classroom, especially our littles. But that's really reduced this week because now the kids are separating from parents relatively easily for the most part. We, I know I spoke with a couple of parents, we would love to see four wins back in our school to get that up and running. We welcome parent volunteers, but of course, what's in our community right now, we would just want to be smart about that. So I know the PTO has asked about events, and I just said, for now, let's keep things remote, if possible, just because it's my thing to do.
That's awesome. Also, Sarah, Eric, on your virtual meeting on the eighth grade DC trips, if you could just send the board members that link in case they want to listen in?
Sure.
Thank you.
Again, we're just.
Does the board have any other questions for either of our principals? And both of you, I want to thank you again. I know that contact tracing has fallen upon just the schools. The state really isn't doing much of anything to assist us this year, and I know it is taking an exorbitant amount of your time during the day, and I want to thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, second.
Thank you so much. I just want to give a shout out, too, to Pam and Sheri for front office, and Lisa Madison. There was a night that I worked until 1:24 in the morning, and I just let, you know, our teachers and staff know if I don't get to an email or if I, you know, I'm inundated with this, which isn't fun, which is not what we want to be doing. But really, everybody has just stepped up and helped, so thank you. This too shall pass. This too shall pass.
I just want to commend you, because anything we can do to keep our students safe, most certainly. Any other questions for the principals, superintendent? Seeing none? We'll go on to personnel. Chris, I don't know which way you want to do this.
Well, we can start with just contract recommendations and just work our way through, and there are some resignations, retirements that we, at the end, we can do, that's, that are in the packet.
Okay. Resignations, I've only got two on my list. And then I have a request. Or two requests. Are there others besides the Humphrey and Scandosa?
No.
Okay. In your packets, you'll notice that we have two, a pre-K para and a teacher who are not returning for this year, and that would be Cassidy Humphrey and Catherine Scandosa. Anybody kind of have a motion to accept first? These are resignations.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignations.
Thank you, Jeff. Now discussion, anyone have any discussion on it? Seeing none, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Then we have two. Chris, did you want to talk?
About the leaves, are you referring to, Lynette?
Yes, yeah, that I'm looking at.
I think they're pretty clear-cut in terms of what the extended leave are, just, so I would recommend that they both be approved, so.
Okay. Board members, because I have done everything else, we do have two requests for leave, and if I could have a motion to approve those.
I'll make a motion to approve them.
Thank you, Tina. Any discussion on those?
I would just like to add that I appreciate you giving us such notice.
Yeah, for sure, we're really short, we're not the only ones that are extremely short on teachers and finding long-term subs and short-term subs, but I agree, Tina. Okay, seeing none, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Attorney leaves, Marcia.
Can we mention what the leaves are for, Lynette?
One, yeah, we can, I just can't identify them. One is a medical leave, and I can say for a happy reason, and what a bullfart in that. Children are expected, let's just leave it that way. Any other questions? Marcia, I think that answered yours. Okay. Tina, you also? Okay. Next, we have one contract recommendation, and it's for support staff. Hannah Anderson as a building substitute. Do I have a motion to approve?
I actually have a question before we do that.
Sure.
I sat on her hiring committee, and I thought she was being hired for a pre-K para position.
Yes, she is, she just needs to complete some paperwork later this month to then officially be moved into that title.
Correct.
So we have to approve her again later?
That's, I know, I was wondering that, too. So right now, we just have to have her under this title, but she's serving as our preschool para, and then later this month, when she completes some more paperwork, then her title will be the pre-K para educator, but I don't know if that.
I believe she probably will come again because it's a different contract.
Okay.
Am I correct?
And there'll be some retroactive pay as well, correct. So yes, we'll have to go before the board.
Okay, good. Now may I have a motion? Do you make a motion to approve? Thank you, Tina. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, thank you, it's unanimous. Chair's report, I don't have a lot, just that, you know, most COVID is not on the agenda, not going necessarily to be an agenda item in every meeting topic. Chris will keep us informed as we go along, but there's no reason, you know, we have faith in our administration, we know we're keeping our guys as safe as we can, and probably safer than some of the recommendations that are coming out that we're doing. Policies, who's going to read? The first policy will be H2, and that is the community use of school. Billy and Jeff, I know you're on the policy committees, is there anything you need to bring to our attention? Is this something new, or is it the old one that is just being vegetated?
I think we had a lot of discussion about this, that, you know, should we have a form and have just Chris approve all these for the whole district and all this kind of stuff? And in a nutshell, we basically decided that all of our communities have our own personal needs, and so we kind of left it up to the individual schools to make those decisions, the local administrations and that kind of stuff. Because everybody has, every, every, every school has different needs. Some have high schools, which are, you know, more, more intense with their athletics and other events and stuff like that, so we kind of left it like that right now, that everybody would kind of be their own individual keepers of their facilities.
Yeah, Lynette, just to add to that, and Billy was there as well, and I think Tina, you may have been there as well, but we discussed that there would be an SU policy, but as we look at the procedural aspects, particularly in relation to the forms, that would be more of a local district. Because we know that, you know, Quarry Valley has a form that it'd been using, Wells Springs had a form that they'd been using, as well as Rutland Town, so I do believe the policy may, while the policy itself would stay there, but I think we'd look at the, like I said, the procedural, the forms would then still stay within the local district's control, to know what that looked like.
Okay, thank you. I mean, just because that was brought up, Chris, Tina has not attended any of the policy.
She was there as a, she was there as a community member, I do believe, so. No, you weren't at that one, Tina? Okay, I apologize. I have too many meetings.
I've never, I've never attended one.
Okay.
My name is on the list as on the. I've never, I've never attended one. My name is on the list as on the invite for some reason, but I was never at one.
But thank you. I know you invited her. She'd be there, but.
We'd have welcomed her input.
I'm sorry.
I said we would have welcomed her input, so.
I know. Okay, continuing on, the community use of school facilities, this is our first reading, so it will come back to us next meeting. Hearing no changes or anything on it for approval. Moving on, the next one we have to look at is weapons and firearms. Billy, you want to tell us about this?
Yeah, this one, we had a lot of discussion about, you know, this being grandma, and sometimes, you know, parents might be at a game and, um, at a leatherman or a work knife on them or something. Really, we're, this is like a standard policy that's been regurgitated, and, you know, the discussion is just like, if somebody feels unsafe, in school, administration will handle it, and outside of school, people will notify them.
And Lynette, I just want to add that-
Just a, just a second, Chris. Wait till the fire trucks go by.
Well, we did that for effect, so.
Play it now.
Okay, Chris, try it again. We can hear you now.
Okay, and just add what Billy had said. The initial policy just had really just kind of stayed with firearms, and we, as a group, discussed that it should be a little more expansive to include more than just firearms, particularly with weapons. And so we found some other policies around the state that we liked, and we kind of incorporated some of the language from there, as well as including the see something, say something aspect, which encourages, whether it be students, staff, community members, to assist with reporting and just to, you know, serve as another set of eyes for us, just to help keep our, our schools, our communities safe.
Yeah, that's awesome. That is a tough one, because there's no way you can list any item that can be used as a weapon. It's just impossible. But, so, F12, does anyone have any changes or anything they request? No?
Sorry. Keep talking. But on page two, on the last sentence, it says, "In addition, any student who brings a weapon to school shall be referred to a law enforcement agency, and a report may be made to VCF." I'm curious if maybe we should change the language to say that, "In addition, any student who brings a weapon to school may be referred to law enforcement agency." Because just above that, we listed several cases where we wouldn't necessarily behave the same way. For instance, if a student was unaware that it was in their bag, or if the student's disabled and it's, this conduct is related to disability. In those cases, we probably would not refer them to law enforcement, I believe. So I just thought maybe if we left it as "may," it would give us a little bit more leeway.
I'm not sure. I, and I think we're covered under that because law enforcement or our SRO, who is law enforcement, can be advised of this. A case or an incident may or may not, according to that, may not be generated. But I believe the state, there's a big push on anything like this being reported. So if we say that, and I'm not sure, like I said, I was not on your committee, guys, that it was brought to law enforcement's attention and deemed non-essential or whatever. I mean, there are stories, there are horror stories out there where, Johnny and I know, my son always had a pocket knife. We were allowed to back then because he's a farmer. So, and forgot it was in his pants pocket, and they made a big deal. This didn't happen in Rutland Town. They made a huge deal of that. The child was suspended. So I don't want any horror stories like that to go around. But, so, I'm not sure, guys. What, Chris, what did you think about the two aspects?
So what I'll do, Tina, is I'll just double-check with our, our legal team just on that to see if that wording, you know, shifts liability, puts us in a precarious position. We do have to, then, either do a reporting on all sorts of things, and this is one of the things we do have to report. So, but I understand that you look at weapon really as a very subjective term, what could be, what constitutes a weapon. So, you know, a pen could really be, you know, constitute as a weapon, just depending on how it's being used. And so is that lumped in with the same as like a machete, or like I said, a hunting knife that someone brings in? So I will double-check, and I can have an answer for that. I can email that to the board if you'd like, just the next day or two. Want to hear back?
Thanks, great. Yeah, okay. Or if there's a change that you think needs to be made, then we'll just bring it next time and review it. Is that okay, Tina?
Okay.
Any other questions? So we'll put down the weapons and firearms F12 as first reading, and that'll come back at our next meeting. The next is a statement. I've got to say this again. This is a statement, it's not a policy. This is one of those topics that you're never going to get everybody happy with. So the entire GURCU community has come up with a statement that it's being looked at. And this was brought up, what was it, last year, Chris, or a year and a half ago, when I was on the committee, and we kind of put it aside because it was so polarizing.
Yeah, I mean-
Billy?
No, you're right. The flag policy was brought up last fall, and I think just considering the makeup and just the timing, there's some concern about a shift in the, the makeup of the committee and is starting this. But I think it's come back, you know, I know in other, in some of our other districts, we've had some flag requests, and I'll leave it there. Lynette, let you finish explaining, so.
That's okay. And like I said, it depends, of course, whether it's elementary, if it's a K8, whether it's a high school. And it seems to be mainly the high schools at this point that are looking at that and having a lot of requests. And their students are older. They're getting ready, they're going to be adult, most of them, in a year. Elementary school, of course, so we got differing opinions on how to handle this. So I will, or do one of you boys want to read the, your statement?
I can read if you, if, Billy, if you want to, or if Billy you want to, or Jeff, doesn't matter to me.
I can read it.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, go ahead, Bill.
Flag displayed on any facilities overseen by the Rutland Town School District will only include the United States flag and the Vermont State flag at the time of approval of this statement. Facilities within the Rutland Town School District will keep with state and federal guidelines for flag display on public facilities with proper etiquette during school hours and after-school hours, weather permitting. When ordered by the President of the United States or the Governor to commemorate a tragic event or death, the flag shall be flown at half-mast. The superintendent's timely approval is required to fly the flag at half-mast at any other time. Future requests to fly other types of flags will be considered when an adopted flag policy is in place.
Do my board members have any questions on this statement? No. Okay. We have a statement because we do not have a policy. So this covers us until such a time as we have a policy. May I have a motion to approve the flag statement?
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Thank you, Russ. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, guys. Okay. Our next meeting, or our next meeting is actually, it's going to be board retreat. While I say retreat, it's a workshop. It will be, board members, at that time, unless something happens, we will meet at the supervisory union office. And that will start at 5:00 PM, correct, Chris?
That's correct, yes. And we will have food. So if there are some dietary considerations, please let me know.
If not everybody agreed to pizza, I don't know. Okay, if you need anything, Chris, just let me know for that. And the public, this is also because the board is meeting. It is a, also a public meeting. We will be, you'll be able to access that online, correct? Like Google, like tonight?
Correct, exactly. During the workshop, public will not be allowed to participate. They'll be allowed to just view and hear what's going on.
Okay, okay. And this is mainly, it's just advice for boards association. It's put on by Susan Holson. She's the Director of Education Services for the Vermont School Boards Association. It's just pretty much a house planning for boards. Should be very interesting. Any of my members have a problem with attending that date?
I'll be here.
Okay. Okay. The other one is, is that date correct?
October 11th, yes. I did send you an email about this. Let, the only-
Right.
You know, if the board wants to discuss that or not, but.
Yep. Monday, the 11th is a holiday, so our administrators actually could have a three-day weekend. So my question to the board, do you want to meet, or do you want to change the date so our administrators can have a three-day weekend?
I'd like to change it so our administrators have a three-day weekend.
Thank you.
I second that.
Chris, have you looked for a decent date that, because you wrap other meetings?
Define decent. I can do the 12th.
Okay, wait, let's do that first. Is everybody available to wrap the board meeting on Tuesday the 12th? I am.
I can be there.
Chris, don't worry about me.
I am.
I'm not.
Oh, Bill, is that that one date that you stay? You said you always have meetings?
Yeah, I have a financial aid meeting for our high school seniors.
Okay. Okay, Chris, pick another one.
Okay, do you want to stay that same week, or?
That's fine with me. It's up to you.
We could do the 19th, the following Tuesday. I mean, the only, you know, we have, 19th to 20th would work.
I can do the 19th.
I can do either.
I will not be here from the 12th to the 21st. But that doesn't mean, I mean, I can call in. Tina, you could run the meeting, because I won't have my, I'm not bringing my computer to, on vacation with me this time. If you want to run it, I'll call in and listen and participate, but all I'll have is my cell.
What about Tuesday, October 5th? We'll go the other way.
That works for me.
I can do that.
What day is that again?
Tuesday?
October 5th.
October 5th.
That's okay with me. Okay, so let's plan the next meeting to be the 5th of October. And I want our administrators to write an essay on what they did on their little vacation. Do I have a motion to change the date of our next meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Tina. Need more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimously approved. We have no reason for executive session, so adjournment would be next.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Thank you, Jeff. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at 7:05. You guys have a good month.